The whole, and they don't have a sense of belonging. So I'm just wondering, rather than ju- just look at this time lost, is there anything we can do to maybe bump, bump up our effort? For lack of a better way of saying it. David?
Stay on this, on this point. So I love this stuff. Change, condemnation, destruction, all those things that are institutionally unhealthy. So I appreciate the culture that we're trying to keep on this thing. And the courage it takes to ask, you know, questions about yourself. So I, I don't have anything really. I have like a wondering, like how much work? And I know we've got this in place, but how much work we do to continue to see, are there ways we can improve some of these questions? Because even I get confused. And when I look at bar charts on the section on belonging, it's like every little group was less than 50% favorable responses. But then when you ask overall sense of belonging, it's 63%. And so there's some things in there where I'm like, that, it like, it makes my ears and my brain kind of break down a little bit. And then like the most favorable comments we give to kids are like the sense of culture and belonging. Right until like there's some things that are like one of the big gears are breaking down in my brain. Now granted, secondary kids in general don't feel like they belong in life, period. Right? Like that's just a tough age. And so we're also fighting that just demographic trend in general. But I would just want to drill down on some of those groups of questions where it's like, you know, there's data anomalies where it's like, well, it was not, not good, not good, not good. And then great, and we're all in the same category. How does, how do we square that? Or maybe there's some questions we can ask the kids to square that.
So like follow up, work with?
Yeah, or just like a blank. If, if you were negative on these three, but positive on this one, you know, what's the difference? What's the deal? How, how can you, how can you make that statement? You know, like the adult and the belongings. Yeah.
The other question.
Right? I think it was on the last slide where we had the three top names. I like the boom. I'm gonna say this is correct. So almost 43 high school students provided an example of overall belonging being high. Is that, so were there other options for them to go?
They're over.
Okay. But there were four age groups.
That's where they chose. Okay, because I saw that. So I'm making sure to make sure.
It's a good question. Thank you very much, Dr. Walker. Good job. That's rare, a presentation, yes. Well done. I think it was the art history education part. Okay, next up on our agenda is item three. Consideration of the approval of the Alamo Heights High School new proposed courses for the 2022-2023 school year. And our presenter is Charlotte Doherty. Will you take it away?
So I'm excited again to be here to talk about creating opportunities for students who has heard about feedback. And this is in the academic role. And so every year, the academic dean gets to represent the high school in the courses that are being proposed. So just to give a little bit of background, so that you know the process and anyone that might be listening or in the audience understands the process of how a course comes to be at the high school or even the junior school. Is previous to May, teachers begin to think about, is there a course that they would like to offer at the high school? Sometimes that's feedback from students in an informal way, or maybe it's a passion that they have, or they see it's a need that we might have as a campus to help us move forward. And they kind of continue to use a progression of a course. So in May, they come with a submission and they talk through what that course might be. And there's some things that we ask them to do. They have to find some correlation to a P E M S code. It has to be approved by the state. So once they do that, we then take it to our site-based and decision-making team. And the teachers talk through what that course would look like, why it's important, and how it kind of fits within what we already have. That's when it comes in June. And then in August, we take it to the principal, Ms. Smith, and she then takes a look at it. She determines, is this even feasible? Do we have the funds to be able to do it? Can we make this happen on our campus? Do we have the personnel to be able to do that as well? If we add an additional, or are we also going to be taking something away? So then, once that is done in August, in September, we take it to Dr. Walker. And she then kind of goes again over it to see if this is a possibility or if there's something that we might be missing. And then we bring it to you all here in November. And so then this is where we begin to talk through any courses that we'd like to propose. We have four this evening. And once those get approved, we start putting in the man our academic planning guide so that students can start making those courses, which they've already started doing with our junior conferences. So what constitutes a new course? As I mentioned earlier, that a teacher, we have to make sure that it is T E A approved and then it has a P E M S code, so therefore it aligns with the state. We also make sure that it's T E C's aligned as well. But the big one is, is does it fit with our profile of a learner? Those are the things that we ask teachers to look for as they do. And is it going to provide these experiences for students that we want them to have? So looking back, we're going to take a look at what the course updates that you all approved last year and give you an update on those. So the first one we have is the community transportation. And if you remember that one, and then just to kind of recap for those that were not here, this was actually related to special education. And so this is a transportation course that one of our teachers helps our students, provide them with skills to be able to ride private, public transportation. Unfortunately, that course did not make, but we have the potential for six students to possibly take it this, this next coming year. So any course stays on our course catalog for three years, as long as it is continuous. So if, this one will stay and hopefully we'll begin to grow that one. The other one that you all approved was the AP 3D Art and Design. And that has 12 students in it right now. And then again, it allows a student to, who really has a passion for art, to progress within the art realm there. So they can take Art One, ceramics, and then this 3D art. And so it's doing well. The next one is, is actually the two. Theater Directing One, which is right now. And then Theater Directing Two, which we'll implement in the next year. So Theater Directing One is actually a stacked class and it did make. So we actually have six students that are in this class. So when we say that, these are three students in one theater production class that are helping direct what's happening in that class. So they've taken on a bigger role as directors to any of the publications or the things that they produce in these classes. And then the other three are in the other class. And so that is growing even more so. And the, the excitement for it is pretty neat. So they are taking on a more of a leadership role within those. So that's kind of an update for the courses that were presented last year. So our new courses are going to start with C T E. And I was able to come and talk to you all about that. And so here are the two that we are going to be proposing. This is AP Computer Science and Principles. And this one is basically computer programming, but it's AP. So students have the opportunity to take the AP test to go along with this. If you remember, last time I kind of talked about the industry certifications. So this one has one, but right now the focus will be on the AP test because it is a new course and the teacher does need to prepare them for the AP test. So hopefully eventually we can add that piece and the teacher's more comfortable with that. So this one's ready to go. And it's our, he's already kind of teaching it like an AP course. And so students are doing really well. The next one we have is a math class that we are proposing. So this adds another course, or another course for our math pathway. And so this is more among the lines of, it's called Algebraic Reasoning. And what it is, is it's reasoning skills rather than procedural skills. And students have the opportunity to have more of a logic course. And again, it could also as well be used as an extra, but not extracurricular. It could be used as a, what word? elective, thank you very much. Used as a math elective as well. And so again, it just provides another opportunity for students within our math courses. The next one we have is the one that I talked to you all about. This is going to finish up our four-way pathway for our practicum and education. And basically, this is actually a two-credit course. So students would, this was more of a field-based internship. And students would be going off to, we'd invite, so we can open it up, not just to Howard, but to the elementary schools as well. As any student, because we already have a student that's interested in like second grade or third grade. And so to be able to offer that. So this is that fourth course in our pathway in our C T E programs that does lead to an industry certification, even though it's four. Remember after two, they can apply to that industry certification. And then our last one is actually a science class. And it is an AP Environmental Science class. We offer environmental science grade level right now. But this teacher wanted to add an AP portion. And so again, this is going to look at the natural world, environmental hazards, and any problem solving that goes along with it and connected to the AP test as well. She's extremely excited and I was hoping that she would be here to kind of talk through some of that too. She's extremely exuberant about this course. So this has attached to it is the AP test course cost to it. And that is our courses for the new school year. Questions?
What do you have a part in a moment that that computer science class is going to turn into the AP? Oh my gosh. Not unless it's huge. It's big. It's huge.
In fact, we had to open Ann Carter's room. It's now, it's now a double room. Like it's like a 36, 38. Yeah.
Oh, it's huge. So, um, so in the art, what's, this is my question. What is the minimum number for it to make?
Usually we're at 15. So here, and this is kind of, I'm glad you brought that up. You know, again, last year was a little bit of a different year. What we've realized is that, and what we'd like to implement is like an electives fair and course fair. And so this will be a portion of that, kind of like we have our clubs and interest groups. We'll do the same thing for electives. That way you get, work gets out. So if you don't get the word out about your course, you know, like it's just kind of word of mouth within what you're doing already. But what we'd like to do in the spring or coming up soon is an electives fair. So to get those numbers up.
So how did the art one make it to 12, 11?
Well, it had more students, but some students ended up dropping the class.
I guess, you know, I just asked those questions as Dr. Sharon is working that, you know, is high. High graders, I know a lot of parents is about high class sizes at the secondary level. And so, you know, when we take a classroom, we devote a teacher's period to only 12 students. I mean, that's not necessarily balloon other class periods because we're, you know, ultimately every kid has to be in a classroom. And so I know, you all know that, but you know, as, as, you know, I get that from 15 down to three, we end up with only 12 and a half art class. But as the teachers are proposing these in the coming, you know, in the coming year and, you know, I'm like, here at the computer sciences school, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be fishing the envelope any more than 15, you know?
Typically, we don't. And if we do, and we do see that high need, because again, this is another level for art students. So we want to make sure that we do provide them the ability to, if they want to take all four years art, that would be great. And what our teachers often do is stack their classes. And so that could be what we could have done for her and add in. Correct. World Language classes.
And that's, that's part of the grantee law. And as it is for theater, you were describing three students that are in a room with other students. I understood that's, that's.
That's a stacked class.
All right.
And then those, those six are going to go on to Theater Production Two. So we asked for it last time so that they could have, we wouldn't have to come to you this time around for the extended two. So they're in Theater Directing Two now. Well, they will be.
I appreciate that out of the selection, there are so many options and that there are so many options. You know, that's, that's encouraging to me to see that the teachers are eager to create more, you know, true. And these are for curriculum, so they're in the science. So I appreciate that too. Thank you.
Two questions. One is, so do we still have AP art history also?
I love it.
So that's, and that's one thing is I, as far as students, the low class number, I do appreciate that someone who is on an art track does have an AP option. I think that's really important. So even if the numbers are a little low, we are able to stack it. I, I think that's important, even at the critical. And then secondly, where in that, I was looking at the process and you showed it to us before, but where is there a place in there for the student voice? So if there's students that, that can come to the teacher? Or is there a place where they can say, we really want this class?
Yes. So I did remember that you all talked about that too. And so it's something that Cory and I have talked about. How do we find a process that is not like everyone's going to ask for underwater basket waving like these sort of rages courses by giving them a voice? So we're in the process of looking at what that could look like for next year and having those conversations.
I was kind of thinking of the, the same way that, that you're talking about having an electives fair. And it's sort of the same way that that works where, where the club fair, they have sponsor.
Correct.
So maybe the same kind of concept for a course where they find a teacher that's also going to sponsor the idea and help them through that process. That kind of call, they're used to that process, that might.
Yes.
Should fit my question.
Did you write the standard question?
But I actually had to. But I was concerned about these concessions of a course and how it was only teachers. You know, I mean, to me, there should be a sedentary or something, you know? Because, you know, if only a deep certain teacher's going to offer this, you're, work harder, do more AP or what have you, you know? But let's say if everybody in this department is fine, I mean, whatever. I'm just giving you an example. It just doesn't seem fluid. Okay? And the other thing I had was, is this just for the high school or we don't, no new courses?
No, no courses at the junior schools.
Just this year. There was only about a five issue.
David?
Sidebar, I love that our school board gets to discuss this with our educators. Because I got, as I've got their trustees at other schools, it's like they're shocked when we give this kind of. So I, I love this department. This is a wondering, I don't know that you're going to have an answer. But I'm thinking this, this idea of stacking classes to me is incredibly powerful. And I've seen a kid, I think he was like in English five or something like that, in English four class. Because my brain keeps going back to like, how can we give our children opportunities to really accelerate their learning and credit? Like getting way far ahead of everybody else, not in terms of GPA, but in terms of experience, like moving down the road. And I'm kind of, the wondering I have is if, if you're teaching, you know, calculus or maybe trig, and you're like, okay, we're teaching this class, there is no next class for this kid, but wow, they're way ahead. And there's no other place for them to go. As a teacher, I have the capability to give that child more materials and actually start teaching them more advanced class? But I, I don't have a way to give the kid credit for that advanced class. I mean, is there any, is there any process we can dig into and try to figure that out? Or is this?
Been curbs bound.
You all approved. Do you remember we came to as a course? The course was originally written in P E M S code as a G T mentorship program. And I, I didn't have the use and does it have to be only G T students? And when we read the fine print in the T E A, it did not. So for us, it became this mentorship program. And we've had kids who, Paris Shankle's daughter, who did the internship to the veterinarian. We had another student, Jeff Isaac, who did an amazing, he was science, a huge citywide. So like, so he was in Ron's cause and Ron was extending his work because Ron was serving as his mentor.
But I guess my question is, it seems like that's always on the front end. Like you've got to predict that the child is going to be moving that quickly and therefore you can create resources. Like if you get into the class, you're like, man, this kid is so far ahead. It's too late for the kid and they're in fifth class. And it's like, well, here's, here's something else we could have given you if we had done, we got it approved. It's just, there's certain flexibilities that we can't do. And it's just kind of a wondering where I'm like, I'm just wondering if there's more firepower we can kind of push down and accelerate.
And, and there are other things we do. We've had some students come through who were so incredibly accelerated. You see it in math in particular. And they'll go on and spend their last two years taking college courses, either in Carnegie or Trinity. And so we do have ways.
Or junior high.
Bring junior high kids up to the high school. So, yeah. But those are the challenges. I, I have one question on this process. And I understand for something like this, it's got to be, have a very deliberate process. But how nimble is it on something like, I was thinking, put the new score over it and realize we need to get kids operating this and they're doing great. I doubt you all, like flip-flopped switch, suddenly created a sports broadcasting or communication. How do you handle that? And is there a way to, you know, super quick build your force in something like that?
So what we're talking about is the production class. It's still a production class. And that, that when they go, those students have walked into that class or have selected that class. Then it becomes, would you like this path, which would be the jumper on? Or would you like this path? So it becomes differentiated within that class. Our kids have had a passion for it. So then they pass.
If you, if you came for the one, that's great.
So it's been colliding with it. And this is about schools.
Yep. Kate?
On the list, I, I asked, I thought that we also approved a couple of junior school that have a year-long art or a year-long VR arts. We have entered that, we did the courses made or not?
Right, on the update from last year. Okay.
Anything else? Charlotte, thank you very much. Great presentation. Always a good one. All right, we are now going on to section B. Oh, yes. If you have, just in the hotline. Do I have a motion to approve the consideration of the approval of the Alamo Heights High School new proposed courses for the 2022-2023 school year? Second? Very? All in favor? Aye. opposed? Passes. All right, now we will move on to section B, Board Goal Five, School Finance. And Mr. Phil Mullin is with us tonight for consideration of approval of the 2020-2021 financial audit.
Okay, I'll stand for your benefit and then I'll go back.
I can't believe people are leaving. Don't take a person.
I'm old, I'm old, I'm old, dude. I do have people, so. But I'll say the obvious, so I'm Phil Mullin. On the independent C T A, you guys hired the auditor to change things. So my job is to take your annual report, test it, issue our opinion, and just take that here. So we've done that, very good, into issue due opinion, which is what you want. So it means that the teacher, it's a good annual report. And we also have to look for any kind of combined segments that you might run out of that would impact those numbers. And we didn't have anything like that. So there's a letter that accompanies the report that has no binding names or other plate. So there's nothing really in here that T E A should be upset about, let's say, with the next summer. I had just a couple pages I was going to highlight on. We did meet with the auditor previously and said, we're going to go over it with them. But since you weren't, some of you weren't in that room, I just wanted to get a couple of numbers. So your highs roll over, I failed. But if those of you go fast enough, please interrupt if you have questions or questions, go over the paper. So Alicia has two pages that she was going to present. And the first one is your budget comparison to the general fund. And you'll see the top kind of puts a red box of the big numbers. But your revenue is 81 million last year, which is up from year before. And mainly that was expenditure explains you had, about 2.5 million and a little bit of taxes. But the state also took away some money. That's that 991 contract instructional services, the 33 million. So your expenditures were also up. And the reason they took away more money had to do, because you probably looked at more taxes, but also because of the stimulus money professor. They're replacing some of the state funding. That's the way they adjust for state funding, what they can wait for. So your revenues over your expenditures were 2.5 million over, which again, is pretty much the insurance proceeds. So you did have the insurance proceeds, you were going to write it off right here. And very bottom line, your general fund yielded 21.2 million in buck downs. So the best way to try to evaluate that is convert it to how many months of operating costs you have saved up. And it's about four and a half months, which is right, this week's father, where we recognize and where we make great sense. It's going to right there in the middle. And your 2022 budget has a deficit, probably because of the land purchase, but also just cost of road. So if that does come through, I know Mike is usually pretty conservative in fudge things and probably going to need some pages in there. But even if there's not, you should be able to weather that in your fund balance and not really having any issue with that. On the next page is the rest of your funds. And the second column is your debt service fund. And you'll see that you, you had just under a million dollars in surplus there this last year. So ending the last year, you had just under 2 million in that fund. Because of the tax rate reduction for this next year, you're going to use a little over a million of that. So half of that's going to go away next year. It's going to give you a little bit of a vision when you figure out after entire tax rate ends up for next year. Right next to that, Capital Projects Fund is by like 5 million. That's the very, very last bit of the bonds that were approved in 2017. And that's been pretty much committed, so they'll, so they'll be off the votes this year. And then right next to that is everything else. 2.1 is about similar to the year before. It's about half financials and half business activity. We also provided a, our estimate of your first rating for next year, which is how T E A grades your financial statements. And if you recall, on your last first rating, which you just got, the official one, you missed this period by a couple of points. So we're definitely going to get that back next year, so that will, or right price. Your sweet five with 90. The only place that you're really losing points is how much debt you have compared to your total assets. They want you to have more assets and less debt. So whenever you're issuing new large bonds for new construction, you're going to have a one-to-one ratio and they want it to be better. So you're always going to be behind in the ball if you're doing new bond issues. And the other one that you're losing points on is, I'm only sure anything for this last year because of your construction. So once your construction bills drop, that one should prove to be a four points on the financial audit first rating. But the one important thing is if you pass. So if you pass, then you'll have a three rating also. That's what I wanted to touch on. Any questions?
David, go ahead. Can you back for a while?
No. I mean, this, y'all, I think y'all really exhausted this during the committee. But just to reemphasize, but the first rating state oversight has nothing to do with the credit rating of the schools. So you have other folks, you know, credit underwriters basically look at the credit where they just, the school district decide what the credit rating is. And they don't necessarily pay attention to first.
Yeah, the only, the only benefits that we've heard of that it might have stumbled in are philanthropy. You know, if someone's going to give money to a school district, if your, if your first rating is not superior and then other districts is superior, it sounds better to give maybe that district money. So that for fundraising purposes, if you have how papers are superior, financial rating. But you're right, it's not really a financial rating. It's just how T E A rates you to determine what they think you're doing, what they want to do with your money. But it is important because if you fail it three years in a row, they technically blow your district. Or any combination of that plus academic failures would close.
And second question, I know we're really conservative, you know, financial folks in terms of. So when you talk about issuing bond, then what kind of, you know, one-to-one on the assets are better than that? I guess debt to asset or assets to debt, where we don't get it. So if we issue bonds for like transportation, we need to make sure we retire those faster than the asset's depreciation.
Yeah, and a lot faster. If you want to get all the points, that's what I'm getting. But if you're doing, if you're doing buildings, you're, there's really no way to do it right for paying off the loss. Really, really, because whatever you buy is also depreciating quickly. So they're both coming off the books. So the only real way to do it is to have really long building, life that might be like 40, 50 years. But then the bond might be 20. So then over time, you're going to get that on.
My car pants. At some point, I'll get more equity in there.
Anyone else have questions or comments? No, thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consideration of approval of the 2020-2021 financial audit? Lisa, second. Stacy? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. opposed? passes. Stacy? Okay, Mark. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Okay, next up is item two, Public Hearing on our First Rating. Our presenter is Mr. Mike Hager. Both of Mike.
Thank you. So as Phil said, the first rating, this is for the 2020 school year. We missed being superior by two points. I'll get into the reason why. I'll get into the reason why we missed the two point, about two points. TDA doesn't agree with my philosophy on it, but it's, it's basically cash on hand, number three, and they, they, uh, look at the total expenditures which has recapturing. And to me, we don't pay recapture till the very end of the year, so as far as cash on hand, we have more than that. Uh, but they don't, they don't see it in my way. Uh, but we did pass, uh, first rating, um, just a couple of notes. They always wanna know our, uh, administrative cost. We would, within the level of its point one-one-eight, plus what our administrative cost was, uh, one point five, I believe is the, the limit for us. Also with that, one more, one more, Alicia. We have the disclosures, the first is superintendent's contract, uh, indeed, there's, it's part of this, or it's post double web, we post double web. The second is expenditures for superintendent board members. And remember, this is two years ago. The third is, uh, any, uh, compensation superintendent made within that year, the fourth, if there's any difference in the board, and, uh, there were, there were any of that. And the last one, uh, if, uh, the board, any members of the board had any transactions with the district. And if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
Any questions? No. Thank you, Mike. We appreciate it. All right, item three is presentation of community-based accountability. Pillar seven, fiscal and operational systems. Come on back if you want.
You're not used to me during the financial part. But tonight hits a really important presentation, both the audit and the first rating, and it seems like a dedication to come back and just touch base on community-based accountability and fiscal responsibility of the district. So Mike and I are just gonna go through some key points, and we're gonna add it, because this year is unique with all the ESR funds that we've not talked about before. And we brought those to you in August, the board meeting that was outdoors, and so we're just gonna revisit that a little bit as well. The outdoor with the Missy's. So, Mike, you wanna do the first two?
Where's the paintings?
Sorry, stop it. So this just gives your recap, this is the, uh, the two thousand and twenty school year. Basically, as we've always said, we're around ninety percent of our, uh, budget goes to payroll. Which, within not only salaries, but the benefits the district pays, health insurance, our portion of TRS contributions for our quarters. Professional and contracted services, uh, a third of that really is in the maintenance department, and that's through utilities, uh, and any, uh, contracted work that we, we have. It also has in, uh, technology, their licenses for any software they have. Supplies and material, pretty self-explanatory. And the operating expenditures, two-thirds of that is, uh, basically in, uh, our property insurance, or all of our insurance packages, are where those are. Then we do have, uh, a rainbow of, I'm sorry, uh, officials, uh, let up of expenses into operating expenditures. Uh, and then this is a recap of where we are on our bond expenditures. So far, uh, in new construction, foundation, repairs, we're at hundred and fourteen million. Technology, nine point nine million. Uh, I won't read all of them, but, uh, out of the total of a hundred and thirty-five million plus interest that we have mentioned, about a hundred and thirty-seven, a hundred and thirty-eight million, which should be a hundred and thirty-one million so far.
So now we're gonna turn and talk a little bit about, um, federal funds, and specifically the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, otherwise known as ESR. And it had several different iterations, and if you remember back in August, we talked through, and Mr. Vaughn spoke about this also, ESR one, we were awarded, and that's based on the size of our district and our district demographics, three hundred thousand dollars. The state reduced our state funding by three hundred thousand dollars, so that result, zero. ESR two, same thing, we were awarded, based on the size of our district and our demographics, one point three million dollars. The state reduced our funding by eight hundred thousand dollars, which left us with five hundred thousand dollars. It's being allocated to intervention, universal screening, and instructional resources. This grant is allowable up until the year twenty twenty-four. So you can see some of the things that will pay for with this. And a few slides, I'll explain the why for the decision-making behind this.
Is it right there? Ask a question.
Sure.
What is the process by which the state monitoring school district to see what ESR funds they've rewarded, and then determined how to reduce the state fees or the state funds to the school district? Was there a committee? Was this my morass office? Like who? I wanna know the process for deter, like, they singled this out to figure out how to swap federal funds for state funds, clearly. And it, and it does to a lot of districts, including ours. And I just wanna know what the process was to be.
So ESR two, uh, what, if you remember, the, the state had a little farm that's on eighty days. So, uh, for our district, we were, our area was forty-six hundred, possibly. The state guarantee was forty-seven, hundred, forty-seven, fifty-five, maybe. So that differential is what the state was supposed to make up at the time. So I did it, they replaced, that's the two times to make it up there. And then they gave us a balance. ESR one, I'll turn it back.
So, I'm Mike, I'm gonna pretend I sit at the table. Isn't it also the case that all federal funds go to states anyway, and they disperse it to the district? And so they could just sit on it for a while. It, it's not like it comes to us and take it back. It goes to the state first. Right?
I'm asking, sorry.
And if by the state, make those things, the executive branch, he was governor at, he's the one who held it all.
So that was ESR one. ESR two, there's more, there's more with ESR. So we go on. Uh, ESR three, we were awarded two hundred dollars, none of it was with help from the state. I've listed out all of the things that that fund went towards, and put the years beside it, just a note, some things are for multiple years. We will be expanding summer school for multiple years. We will use the same funding for multiple years. There's some things on there that were only this year. We added a dual-language teacher at Cambridge in fifth grade for this year. So there's some things just this year. There were some things that just occurred last year down at the bottom, additional instructional resources, we needed to buy more textbooks, kids were at home, kids were here, we had to buy more books, we had to buy more online licenses, we bought Plexi Glass, all of that was just last year. So that's what all of those notations are about the school year. In addition, there was something called ESUP, which was a supplemental grant to ESR three. We had a hundred, we were awarded a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars a year, and that's being targeted towards edginess and credit recovery, again, for multiple years. Thank you. Thank you. So here's, I said in a moment I would explain the why. Here's the why. We are awarded, again, awarded, based on size of the district and demographics, um, technology and instructional materials allotment. This pays for every textbook in our district, every workbook, every online resource, our intervention resources. It has been ninety thousand dollars for a biennium. Nine hundred thousand, thank you, Mike. Uh, for as long as I can, for a while, I mean, I've been in this for four years, and I can speak if it was higher or lower before that, but they reduced it by sixty percent. In a year that we knew we were going to have this learning loss, they reduced the amount of money we had to buy instructional materials by sixty percent. Which is why our, the decisions we were making with ESR one, ESR two, ESR three, it's instructional materials, because they reduced that by sixty percent. I do want you to know that we have been exceedingly aggressive in applying for any grant that would help us. So we applied for the Texas COVID Learning Acceleration Supports Grant, T-class. And this funds instructional, well, you can read what it funds up there. But we got really creative here, because one of the things that was allowable under this was to address staffing shortages, and there was a part in there about grow your own. So we got our teach program in there, and the grant that Charlotte was talking about came from that grant, under the little umbrella of staffing shortages, grow your own. So we requested, when we wrote the grant, it was for one point two million dollars. We were awarded five hundred and sixty thousand, plus another two hundred thousand for in-kind resources that TDA purchased, and then just directly, uh, allowed us access to. So with that, those will be some materials for that expanded summer school, the professional development built with summer school, and for that teach program, and then some just strategic work and pulling it all together.
So I don't know what passed the work, both in the grant writing, grant maintenance, the compliance, because of this, majority. I don't know another district that doesn't have a grant writer position. This all falls on Jimmy, she's our federal program director, and again, in her student district, has a completely different position, and so, uh, continue to be great for Jimmy's aggressiveness, and I guess grants just continues to be, I don't know, I'm not like this is a block for us.
We took the words right out of my mouth, and I was gonna say that, I mean, we don't have a grant writer, we're doing all.
And we don't have our own program.
Two positions, or two positions, you know, that she assumes that we don't have a chair, so.
That's, that's actually it. We just wanted, it makes sense to talk about how the idea in community-based accountability, our key question is, is our district fiscally responsible? And we've heard tonight our audit findings, we've heard our first rating, and then we touched base on how are we being strategic about the funds that we get, and just walking through the obstacles and barriers that are in front of us as a district to continue provide high programming needs.
Now, I'm gonna follow up on this thing, so. Go ahead, next.
Oh, well, thanks for pointing out, it's, um, but I, I saw, uh, back on the slide about ESR two, that said, coget, it said credit exam, I was just curious, do we, we pay for people to take credit by now? I didn't know.
Yeah.
So what I was gonna say, you may have mentioned that she's doing all the grant writing, and like other fourteen little positions. So are there, are there grants out there that we're not getting our hands on because of that? My, my question is, can we not hire somebody to do grants? I mean, wouldn't they theoretically pay for themselves immediately if they already did?
It's possible. We've gone through the number of questions on some of this, and again, that's part of the staffing request process that I come to with in the spring. Um, and to me, you know, we've not here, we've not have that sort of budget situation, and so it's really hard to, you know, find the sweet spot that, that you're pointing out, but needs to be found, you know, between adding staff that pulls in rather than, like, generating surprise. It's not something that has been lost on us, so.
I was just gonna ask, uh, since I don't think that data was in our board book, would you mind? I would just love it. How does this really get specific?
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Move on to, uh, section C, item one, consideration of a resolution for election of fair appraisal district board of directors for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. We went over this in the, uh, meeting, discussed, we do this every year, and we have decided to go with Sherry Bydon again. So do I have a motion to approve the consideration of a resolution for election of fair appraisal district board of directors for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three? And there is a motion that someone can read in their packet if they want. I guess do I need to read the resolution? All right, I'll read the resolution first. A resolution of the board of trustees of the Alamo Heights Independent School District, whereas the Alamo Heights Independent School District has received the official ballot, electing directors to the fair appraisal district for two-year, two-year terms, beginning January one, twenty twenty-two, through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. Be it resolved, the board of trustees of the Alamo Heights Independent School District casts one hundred and fourteen votes for Sherry Bydon. And y'all remember, we discussed that Sherry's been representing us, we cluster together with other school districts, so that our small number of votes becomes bigger, and we supported Sherry for years, and she's done a great job. So do I have a motion? Someone actually have the motion?
I have it. So good.
All right. Stacy. Do I have a second? Do you have a?
Well, I don't, I mean, excuse us, right? I don't.
Well, I thought I was just reading the resolution. Okay.
Oh, oh. Oh, okay. Right, because I have the resolution, I don't think.
Okay. And I think that must be the motion. Do I have a second? Brian?
Yes.
All done? All those in favor? Opposed? Passes? Okay, we will now move on to. We're gonna now move on to section five, the consent agenda. These are items that are considered routine by the board, or have been previously reviewed and discussed in prior meetings, and that would therefore enact with one motion. I do wanna note that we would like to pull out item five C, which is consideration of approval of updates to our FNG local student and parent complaints grievances, and we're gonna table that until December. Is there anything that any of the board members would like to remove from the consent agenda, other than the above item, to consider as an item on the regular agenda? Not hearing any. Uh, I do wanna at least mention that we received six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars in donations, which is always appreciated. There are no additional items to pull out. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So, Brian, second. Lisa? All those in favor, say aye. And not opposed? Motion carries. Section six, we'll move on to board members' committee reports, and first one will be the Alamo Heights School Foundation, Dana.
All right, we met, uh, yesterday, uh, and they're meeting at different campuses, which is kinda nice, and in that way, they have this principle to bring, uh, teachers and students, just talk about different initiatives on the campus, and so that kinda transference is a whole lot of fun. This school foundation board was being able to see here, and the folks that are benefiting from their work. Um, so the main thing we talked about, um, was the massive success that Greater White had with us. Uh, I can't remember the top line number, it was well over eight hundred grand, bottom line number was, uh, seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. Really is incredible, they had eighty-two paddles up for a thousand dollars, new documentation, looks like that never happens. It was just really incredible to see the community, just like, hey, we wanna get back together, wanna get back supporting our schools. Uh, you know, I think they're really excited with the success, and also intimidated by their own success, like, okay, thanks for your company. Uh, and then Dana had an opportunity to speak to the board, she said a couple things that I, I feel like are worth repeating here at the school board. Uh, but number one is, you know, we're still having, uh, really hard time getting substitute teachers, especially on Mondays and Fridays, you know, the weekend, the weekends. And I don't know if y'all have been paying attention, but like, SAISD just announced that they're helping pay the substitute teachers. A lot of those other school districts that got that increased funding from the state have those funds available to increase pay the substitute teachers. And so that's something we're probably gonna have to consider, uh, to keep things going. I reminded, uh, I'm not even sure that I did volunteer this up, but.
I would kill.
You're not allowed.
So we can.
We can't sub, no.
No.
Why? You're trusted. You can't.
You can be a bus driver.
You can't do anything in the school district of employees.
But we could at SAISD.
Kind of a moat of grass.
The same one, one and a product, go to a different.
All right, so, uh, we also talked about the gradual ways that we're getting, uh, the community back onto our campuses, a lot of Thanksgiving stuff, baking tables, outdoors, which is all this enthusiasm behind all their communities on campuses, just to get that on the campuses, and how much fun it's been. Uh, we had a celebration about the Vader, uh, town. We had a celebration about the Vader Tax Retification Election passing. The only school district thing on the ballot, or a little bit kind of a pass, I think there were like three or four bond elections that failed, which, when you think about it as educators, those districts need facilities, like they're growing and they couldn't get their, their bonds passed. And that's a really interesting deal, but we're grateful to our community for support. And that's mostly it. I will yield my time to Dr. Sher for everything.
All right, next up is the Communications Committee, and we met to do an athletics learning walk toward the new facilities at the high school before we did, well, obviously our facilities is protected and have become a real great sort of community place that everyone is gathering together, which is really fun to see. We first heard from Ron Riddeman, our athletic director, who is always a big dose of positivity. I guess it's easy when your team is undefeated. And then we also heard from a group of students, all seniors who, from various sports, who discussed their experiences. I was going to say good and bad, but I don't remember any bad now, but they may have been carefully selected or our program is perfect. We'll go with perfect. And then last thing, we heard a presentation from Doc Smith, who was here earlier tonight, on the Sports Medicine Program, and that really has grown and is a pretty extraordinary program. The opportunities, who's interesting for the folks who are out there, might one day hear this, they actually identify eighth graders, incoming freshmen, who might have an interest in medicine or in sports or kinesiology, and they approach them about the program. So they're actually recruiting kids who might have an interest. Then they take a man on a four-year program of developmental training. Pretty cool. Yeah, it's really cool, and it's great for our student athletes because we always have someone there when they get hurt. My kid seems to always be getting hurt, so it's nice to have one there. But it was great. And then toward the facilities, like I said, the facilities are amazing. That was it. Another great learning walk. Next up is the District Education Advisory Council. Stacy, take it away.
Great. So we did meet on the 10th, and the first thing that we went over, Dr. Almaral had given the whole committee detailed curriculum materials with sets edited for both junior school and high school. So the council had time to take home the chapters of the book, and look at every page, look exactly what the kids, you know, what's being proposed, being taught. And he really opened up the door for any questions in the session, and I have to say, I mean, everybody loved the materials because there were basically no questions, but kind of. And so, you know, folks, folks seem to be content happy with what, you know, the book recommended, and Dr. Almaral also brought in some of the teachers teaching that and after these, like the last meeting, to kind of schedule what they do, and they were able to come to questions. So there, so there was unanimously consent by the council of those sets of those curriculum. And then the next topic we talked about was the calendar, and I think I'll have to revisit over, I think, so they, the council ended up voting to send the calendar as edited to us, and I guess that's obviously not for tonight, and some will go over it. The discussion was, you know, they've done a survey of the teachers and students, you know, a couple of other books link, all of that, most of the staff, most of the students really want to do something later, so they're going to come to us and present on that. We talked about moving around, you know, the quarter, the end of the quarter, Monday student holiday was discussed, and then at the elementary level, probably the biggest suggestion, the change was since it's into half days or parent teacher conferences, it's a full day. And so it sounds like we're going to have all that presented just later, but for now, the council will have a chance to discuss all of those and then send it to us, but there's some details that I worked on before they share, but that's on the conference and especially at SARAL. And the last topic was, I don't really have to talk about it because it's what Jimmy described to us with all of the survey results and the council wanted to, so every one of those theme conferences we looked at from the students just now, some of the other things, all the coding that Jimmy asked to get subject matters and the folks there, I just had a lot of the same things that we just talked about, so that's it.
Thank you. All right, last is the District Safety Committee, Brian.
District Safety Committee, item number 15, and we discuss three items. First, we discuss the current safety measures that the Alamo Heights Independent School Districts for the humans. Second, we discuss what other districts in Mary County are currently being affected by the safety of their athletic movements. And third, we discuss possible ways to improve the safety offshore in the mental environment. No action was taken, it was just a good, open discussion of pros and cons and possibilities, and we'll continue to discuss it in the next meeting.
Excellent. That's right, we had all that. Okay, we're on to Section Seven, Business Recommendations. Review of the financial report. There's nothing, we've already done all that. Okay. Then we're going on to Section Nine, Superintendent's Communication.
Alderweil. So the only thing I want to try out about Alderweil's new show, because I'm already walked on the second day, it's G and P, which is a long one, possibly coming up. So. So we can, you know, we still do it, it's not right now. But it's just a nice for a whole day. Absolutely. I definitely want to do it, I'd say. Absolutely.
You guys also made first, Friday, so first, if we have to end up building, we need to ask some of the students on something.
Right here. Nothing, I love this one.
It's actually a gift.
Oh, yeah, you know what? I actually don't anticipate that we're going to need that meeting, right? But yes, we will have you reach out to someone to, I just wanted to know in case we need it. So there are a lot of meetings for the building committee, just as far as the R and Q process for architects, and so Stacy and Brian, Clay, we're leaving a lot of reading to for your Thanksgiving meeting.
So the question on that real quick is, we're, um, third is we're going to, I'll phone myself up off of reading, but we're interviewing a bounder, a architect.
We are just, as a building committee, five of us, we're going to share our rankings of all the packets that you'll get tonight, and so there is no need for architects at that point. Our goal, in opinion, the small building committee is running three finalists down in front of the entire board for interviews, and so the first interview will actually be on that December 8 G and P meeting, that's why I extended it 30 minutes, we're going to try to get this about 45 to 60 minutes for an interview. So we'll have abbreviated, try to be concise with our G and P agenda, and I will move into the first round of interviews at that time, and hold in there two others. I think it's December 15. So there's just a lot here, and I actually asked Alicia to please put all of the holiday concerts because it's a really nice touch when we have trustees that show up at those. If you are planning on attending any of those, I just ask that you send me a text and let me know, because we like to acknowledge you in the community, we have some appearance to say, hey, you're there that night. I know you don't like that, that it's good for you and your role, you know, who your role is as a trustee, and so just text me if you're going to be there that night, and now do a quick introduction of you. So I'm not going to go through all of this, but what I am going to say is that the December 15th, Wednesday, December 15th, Architect interviews was listed as a key. And what I'm telling you now is this is going to be totally positive, and you are going to need to add time more, like I talked about the process, so make sure that that's under me there as well. Wednesday, December 15th, Architect interviews. And I would highlight too, we have another Excel graduation on December 16th, and Dana was able to come out today, and that means a lot to families, when we have trustees, they were there representing our board for our graduation, and three great graduates today, so they're able to sign 16. I'm sorry. So we all know, you always hold it, it's just like they have to finish on their work and their plans, so we'll at least have, you know, in our team. But it's posted in that outdoor area, that deck area that they have to rent, so.
Can I tell you, I absolutely love these graduations, like it's all stories of redemption. And you think about other institutions, and they're just trying to get kids out, and here we're celebrating these kids who voluntarily chosen to try to come back, get their credits up. And I cried, I'm trying to hide it, it's like. But it really is, I just, a lot of spirit on it, a lot of our staff puts it together. It's a lot of hope, a lot of love and support.
So we do have a place for everyone, because kids, as they get their credits, as they cross the line, and we celebrate them so they can move out, because that's the goal of the Excel Academy, is to get those out. Okay, any other questions? Everything you have on your calendar is somewhere. It's a lot.
All right, so now we will go to Superintendent Communication. What do you have for us?
Okay, so I'm actually excited to tell, to remind you that traditionally, when I had the opportunity to go to the state future superintendent leadership network, learning time, I guess typically just about three times a year, I've come back to you and claimed the superintendent communication piece to share with you some of the learning and conversation that can take place. And so most of you know that the learning focus of that group of superintendents is around the visioning document, and that visioning document is to bring everybody back up to speed, was written back in 2008 in an effort by 35 superintendents at the time, also in partnership with John Horn and the Schley Center, to really draft what we call, refer to as a new, new vision for public education. And at that time, you know, really to positively stand up for the school leaders, school administrators wanted to stand for, and not just kind of complain, right, to be action and results oriented, and so just being frustrated about the local control, about school policy being taken away, and we get into state and federal. So it's exciting to show that group of 35 superintendents, we now have about 220, again, like-minded leaders at the state level who do meet and who are passionate about all the public schools that offer to our students to our needs. So the work that we do is centered around some core beliefs about rigorous academic outcomes for our students, student experience, and student engagement in our schools, what that looks like now, and just promoting systems and structures that leads to that kind of transformative education experience. The document, the visioning document is frequently referred to as the Declaration of Independence for Texas Public Schools. It's focused around students being creators of knowledge instead of just consumers of knowledge. It's focused around the necessity of assessment that is ongoing and continuous, and not just about one assessment, one high-stakes assessment that defines a district. It's also around the important work that we've been committed to over the years, transforming our operation from bureaucracy into what we call learning organization, where our supervisors and our staff members are empowered to be collaborative about decisions that impact student outcomes in their schools. And then finally, just that return of the authority of educational policies to local school boards, knowing that that's where the engagement and the community can lead and the results for students are expressed. And so the learning at this event, and again, we haven't had these events for quite some time, was all around Article Five, which is organizational transformation. There are six articles in the visioning document, and each event focuses on one, and so you can just see detailed descriptions of what the indicators are that we look at when we talk about organizational transformation. And I would hope, as you look at these, you will see Alamo Heights, and all of the best based on the work that we've done since 2008 and that we continue to do. And so, I have some other questions. Our board has done some pretty extensive work for the visioning document over the years, but again, it kind of has been pushed aside these past few semesters due to the need for superintendents to be fully focused about operations during the pandemic. So again, I'm excited to kind of, you know, push reset on this conversation with people, push reset on it with my, my leadership team, that to spend some time on Friday, getting back into this. And so we were in San Angelo, I got to take, Jimmy and Frank, when we, I was able to invite Cory Smith, I tend to invite a principal to come and go along for the learning as well. And so if you go to the next slide, just to highlight what our takeaways were from that time in San Angelo. I don't know if you all are familiar with San Angelo, but I would tell you that our team kind of came, came away with a really appreciation for that, that town and how they kind of hung on to their core values over time, that really transformed, you know, from what was at one point the bull capital of the world to where they are now. And so I would share a highlight was that we were asked, you can see Jimmy and Frank their picture at the top, and see the devil of them, to share our story of transformation. And that story began back in 2008, when we, as a, as a community, it was actually the school board at that time, the new superintendent, Kevin Brown, called for a focus on continued improvement, and, you know, away from claiming, you know, that we were this district that had this great tradition of excellence, and want to force maintain that tradition, but we wanted to also step into a place of ongoing dialogue about what's working and what could be improved. So you all remember that during that time, we had a widespread community effort, we had over almost 260 people who were involved in that process, articulated 52 different action items at the time. And I will share just a couple of those action items that I feel like has led to transformation. When you think about transformation, you say it's, it's a process in which you don't go back to the people before, right? And so some of these initiatives have really defined new possibilities for our students, new possibilities for our staff, one of which was the partnership with Schley Center back then, and a real thoughtful process about the experiences that we needed to design in our classrooms, and one of our classrooms to what we call a learning platform, away from the traditional teaching platform. Another action item that we highlighted was the creation of our induction system to support new employees to the district over a three-year period of time, because there was a lot of work that we were taking on that we needed to make sure and ensure that we were onboarding our new staff, staff members with. The hiring of our wellness counselor, that was pretty transformative for us back then, during the strategic action work. Incredible program changes, and so if you think about it, I say, we go back to where we were, the opening of AP enrollment, right? Back then, not every child had access to any course that they wanted to take in the course. Back then, we had a leave exit bilingual program where our English language learners were all together, segregated in a classroom, their entire journey through our schools. And now we have the opportunity for them to be in an enrichment model bilingual education, which is the different language call. Opening the process of innovation in our courses, opening up rocketry, opening up heights as a safety area, going through a process, and I love that you brought up, Clay, just, you know, where was the super voice in this? It was a good reminder to us, we were really purposeful about that back then, when we started thinking about innovative courses, and we rolled out surveys to students, and we had pages, and Frank was part of this, and just going through all the feedback that kids, that's where our yoga class came from, that's where our forensic science class came from at the time. Again, just real examples of how we have transformed as a system. I also highlighted and got to share just our focused efforts on continuous and ongoing professional development back before we had a hand around that, it was, it was pretty disjointed, it was, you know, you was teaching kind of what you want, we weren't sharing, we weren't strategically aligned to the efforts around feeding. And then finally, I got to share a lot about the transformation that has taken place in this district based on our teacher leader account. And so you all know that prior to the strategic plan, I mean, we didn't have a formal structure for empowering our teachers to take over our leadership and ownership of positive culture in our district, in their, in their campus. And we have grown that, we have multiple cohorts now, teacher leader accounts that are taking place, and we've actually invited those, because we've heard from our teachers, we've gone through TLA1, we want a next step, right? And so we're offering TLA2 at the time. So just really affirming to get to share the Alamo Heights story of where we are in that transformation. And again, it's important to recognize that, like, you don't say, okay, we have transformed, right? If truly. If we truly are about continuous improvement, then we continue that journey around organizational transformation. One of the highlights of the experience with the future superintendent is that we get to learn about these big learning pieces through business leadership models. And so we were able to visit multiple organizations and businesses there. Are you familiar with MLAs, the boot and the sell making company? The Cactus Hotel, Brooks and Bates Theater, and the Murphy Report. We got to, you know, hear from employees and leaders in those organizations about how they too have transformed their organization over time. And I'm just going to highlight one of the business examples in those MLAs. It's now a fourth generation, family-run boot and sell making company that began back in nineteen thirty-six. What they're known for is their incredible customer service, but they're also known for the commitment to customization. And so they have, they have bank letters that they still bring their customers in. They trace their feet on a bank letter. There's over two hundred and fifty thousand bank letters in their building that traces certain boots back to the individual. And there's a family, there's family traditions of getting boots that were like your grandfather's boots or passing them down. And so one of the great nieces from the family was there and got to share with us the way that the business model has had to change over time, with the way they were just adamant about holding firm to their core values as they walked through those changes. But also their relentless commitment to customization. So then as school leaders, we're able to kind of take that story and think about what does that mean for us? You know, the district is over a hundred years old and what are those core values that we hold on to? With our own pursuit of customization and our living experiences for our students. So that was really fun. I will tell you that those are hot metal boots. I'm going to do that, but that. Quite special to see. And we also always have the opportunity to hear from speakers and just sharing some leadership stories. We heard from the San Angelo state president, Ronnie Hawkins, who's retired US Air Force Lieutenant General. And his message was powerful. We heard from the education consultant, Eddie Coulson. He really helped us with some practical next steps as far as with the transformation journey. And again, districts are on all different, you know, entry points in this. We've been focused around this work for many, many years, but there are districts in the organization who are just starting and get to learn from each other and share. But just to highlight for you, one of the speakers, Matt Lewis. He was the president and he's the CEO of the San Angelo Foundation, who really is focused around the revitalization and repurposing of some of the core buildings there in the town. One of our sessions was at that American Performance Hall. And he just talked about the ideation process as well as the fundraising process that is essential to overhauling that facility. We also got to see a couple of client that has been relocated to this new kind of fine arts performance center and the planning that has gone into place for that kind of transformation. He shared a pretty unique idea that his board thinks about as they walk through those different phases of transformation. And he introduced this term, rainmakers. And he defines it as the person whose influence can initiate progress or ensure success as they walk through changes and continue to support them. And so this caused us to really think about our role as rainmakers, our interaction with rainmakers in our district, interaction with who the rainmakers are in our community. And so just some great, great takeaways there. So again, you know, organizational transformation is a process in which we check the box off and say, we have arrived, we were transformed, there was no more work to do, right? So we had the opportunity to bring some of this learning back to our leadership team. Use what we call an implementation matrix to assess where we are on the spectrum of this work. And there is continued work to do. And so I'll just highlight for you some of those areas. We need a continued focus on updating and continuing that infection, your free program. And that changes every year, you know, that we really need to continue tweaking and listening to our employees about what they're getting and what they need from us to be a successful employee here with us. The continued focus and support, our teacher leader academy, student engagement is a focus. You remember that that was one of the highlighted tenants of this article. You all know that we are continuing our work, that Cory has laid out at the high school, project-based learning. And that's just another way of really authentic working, student engagement there at the secondary level. And then also just the continuation, continuation and supporting of our teachers and staff through authentic professional development. And also the way that we are recommitting to professional, communities, you got to see that on a learning walk when we're at the high school, you have to see that, excited for teachers. So I'll just say, and it feels really nice to be back to normal and having these kind of experiences that continue to shape the work of our students. So it's a privilege to be part of this group. And I love you to share some of that with me.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I want to comment. It's funny, so you're a rainmaker in that context is positive because it's the farming community, right? San Angelo.
Right.
So usually you think of rainmaking as that, oh, rain on my parade, or, but that's positive. And there, I just thought it was like rain skiing, but no rad. But I'm not a rainmaker, it's a positive.
I've always thought of it in business, in some houses, a person brings in the business.
I guess so.
It's a song, Christian song.
Don't let us get too high.
All right. That concludes the public part of our meeting. Before we move into our next items and executive session, if there are no objections, we're going to take a short break before entering into executive session as our Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero zero one. Thank you for staying as long as you did.